Clarksville City Council meeting, the board please.
Councilmember Deans, Councilmember Howe,
Present.
Councilmember Heineman, Councilmember Jackson,
Here.
Councilmember Board,
Here.
Vice Mayor Rippe, Mayor Matha-Jack.
Here.
This evening we have our prayer and pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions, and continue to remind us that all that we do here this evening, and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greatest glory of your name, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're able to minutes of the regulation of June 5.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We have no communications or public hearings, unfinished business, consideration of second final reading and public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Clarksville to Rezone and reclassify certain property between Coleman Avenue and Baltimore Avenue from an R4 classification to an I-1 classification. Notice was regarding a public hearing period of the expert telegram of June 11 and June 18.
We will now open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against, if they do so at this time. You will close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of second final reading and public hearing of an ordinance establishing salaries or compensation for municipal officers and employees for fiscal year 2025-2026, and repealing all inconsistent ordinances, notices appeared as previously stated.
We will now open the public hearing, everyone, anyone wishing to speak for or against, may do so at this time. We will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to provide a 3% pay increase to all employees below 70,000, and utilize the manager's recommendation of 1,200 to those employees above 70,000.
Okay, discussion. You're saying 3% for those?
Under 70, 1,200 for those above.
Well, we have a motion and a second.
I just want to add further discussion of that. I think this is a good idea. If folks are making under $70,000, especially between 40 and 70. If you're making 40 and you get a 3% raise, you're going to get $1,200 anyway. So, and plus, you'll, on the following year, you'll be that much ahead. So, if we really want to support our employees, especially making under 70,000, I think this will be a good thing for them, so I fully support it.
Jackson, you have anything to add to that?
No, I would like to see this prior to the meeting, though.
Well, yeah.
I would have liked to have been able to do the calculations on that.
I mean, if I would think my ballpark required 50,000 per 3%, per 1% increase. And really, if Councilman Worth has said, if you're already at that lower level, it really nullifies that because you're still getting 12 somewhere in there. So, it's just the other employees that are getting slightly more than 12.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, was this not what was original in the first reading?
No.
It was 1,200.
No, it was probably the board.
During budget discussions, when I had them meetings with directors, it was said that percentages, they benefit higher income earners more. So, what we did is we took the 3% that we would generally give, we, and divided by the amount of employees to get an equivalent rate, and we gave that across the board to every employee, and that's what was in the budget.
Uh, so, correct me if I'm wrong again, wouldn't that require amendment to the original reading of the ordinance, or no?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, you know, this is the first I'm hearing of, and we have two councilmembers absent tonight. You know, I would, I would favor a motion to table just till the next meeting until everybody can be here to vote on it.
I'm also concerned about the fact that there's a public hearing on it, and it's the second final reading of it. Uh, you know, I'm not terribly opposed to it, I'm just curious if what we're doing is in order.
Richard, can you comment on that?
I mean, you could move to amend it, change it. The question is, does it substantially change it? And without running the figures, you can't figure that out. So, your first move would be move to amend which was done, and vote on your amendment, and then go from there. But, you know, again, the question is, was it, without knowing if it's a substantial change, I can't tell you. Because I don't know which one of your party.
If you, if council would like to table it, I can have this calculation sent out by email tomorrow. But if council wants some more, we can vote. I don't know.
Well, we have to move on, Councilman House, recommendation and seconded by Councilman Worth. Isn't that protocol?
It was actually me who seconded it.
I'll be well.
They can move to table, trumps everything. So, you can move to table all of that.
I'm not opposed to it either, just for councils, I just, my question is, does it constitute a significant change? Otherwise, council couldn't afford with the amendment. I actually don't think in the grand scheme of things it would constitute that large of a change because of the size of our budget and the amount of salaries that we pay. So, if council's okay with it, I...
You're already, we've got a move to table?
No, we don't. We have a motion, a second to make an amendment.
I'd like to ask, is there somewhere Kim can spitball this thing real quick, or, I know that's a lot to ask, but...
I can have it later tonight.
I, based on the 3%, and Councilmember Howe originally wrote it, it probably wouldn't be that much. And we have seen some savings with amalgamations of jobs in the departments and staff, just the efficiencies within departments, so I don't think it would constitute that large of an impact on a bunch of its staff.
So, you think we should go ahead and vote on this, missing two council members?
I don't think.
Well, I mean, my opinion is, we've taken a lot of votes throughout the year, with six, five, four. We even took a lot of votes last time when you weren't here.
Councilman Howe, is there, is there data that you can share with us that?
This is the first time.
Came up with your amendment, or?
No data, just a motion. Well, typically, again, I don't know what the number is now, but I would say, and I don't have any totally that effects, I can calculate real quick, for positions, that affects. But typically across the board, which might be a little bit more now, it could be 50,000, I don't know what it is now, 60, 65, I don't know. So, it, it, it's not going to be much more than that, because I think, even on the calculation, I mean, 1,200. Right now, what's, what's already being proposed on first reading is $240,000 increase. So, you know, even keeping everybody above 70, taking that off, and then anybody really below the 45, that stays about the same on the calculation, so you're only talking small amounts, so it can't be that much more. I mean, I'll take the gander, say, and it's 260, if I, if I repeat something wrong.
And plus, I think it, it really mirrors the, the counties giving all their 43%.
Is that what's given?
Yes.
So, on a $60,000 salary, that would give somebody a $1,800 increase.
So, that's 800 more, so how many of those you have? I mean, that's what I'm saying.
600.
600, sorry.
Well, I mean, Mr. Howe made a motion, and we had a second. So...
No, it's motion to table, I just called a question.
Well, I, I mean, I personally would like to table it so I can get some more information personally. I mean, guys are dropping this bomb, it's in the 12th hour of the year.
Well, make a motion to table, I mean, I think that's more apt, but just to let you know, maybe next week I'll come back with another motion. Well, if the mayor's putting the motion out to table, I'm going to second that. You know, I think that, you know, to be able to sit down and look at some numbers, you know, and see what the changes are going to be, you know, is, is just the right thing to do.
So, we have a motion and a second?
Discussion on that real quick. Would that require some type of budget revision after July 1? I mean, if that's the case, another one?
We have to do one anyways.
Correct, okay.
We have to do one in the first month.
I'm not terribly opposed to, to Mr. Howe, I'm just curious, for someone who's so meticulous over the budget, Mr. Howe, you know, it seems like that would be, the numbers you'd be prepared to give us, I'm just calling it like I see it. But I'll support it, I mean, I don't, I don't really have a problem with it, if it's only, from what you say, a couple hundred dollars per employee.
Well, we have a motion and a second to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor.
Martin Howe?
No.
Will Heineman?
No.
Mark Jackson?
Yes.
Wayne Moore?
No.
Mayor Matha-Jack?
Yes.
Now, you're back, you're going to move in.
We have a second. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Howe, affecting that Councilboard Heineman-Heyman, so you can handle that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Howe, and seconded by Mr. Heineman. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
All opposed?
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Heineman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Board?
Yes.
No. No. Okay, so the motion to amend passes. So, now you made your original motion, as amended. So, the amendment, so 3% for under 70,000? Okay, so we need a motion and a second to vote on the original.
As amended, yes.
As amended.
As amended.
Our motion to approve the original, um, original consideration with the amendment.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
New business? Consideration of the purchase of fire equipment utilizing CDS grant funds. A resolution of the city of Clarksville, West Virginia, to authorize the purchases of certain fire equipment using congressionally directed spending, and permit such purchases through sole source bidding.
Second.
Second. Uh, discussion. So, I had this question prior to the resolution being put on the agenda now. So, I guess the question for me still stands. I fully support the CDS grant, uh, and purchase of the equipment, but I think from a procedural standpoint, I guess my question would be, should the resolution be for each purchase rather than lumping them all together? For several reasons, I don't know, I, I obviously have not read the CDS grant, but I think from the auditor's standpoint, typically, they like to see a motion for each purchase of these equipments to match up with the vendor and the funding mechanism, we're taking it from CDS and if, such as the, uh, the, the other fund, we're taking it out of the rescue fund, the rescue billing fund. So, you know, that, that's the question I have, I think just procedurally, I mean, if we are coming back, or not coming back, but, you know, I think this, we just got received the notice to proceed, um, but I just wonder if that would be...
So, I would root that if you... So, I would agree with that if it wasn't 100% funded through the grant, but it's all 100% funded through the grants. There's no match required by the city.
Well, I would agree with you, except that it does say in the memo, unless I'm misunderstanding.
I have more of an explanation. So, we've emailed the congressional office to see if, because we have enough money in the grant to buy everything. However, they have to agree to let us do that, and we haven't heard back yet. But if it had to be on this agenda, because if we don't put in the orders by the 30th, then the prices go up. So, we were, because of just how congr- the grants have been so wonky since November, our deadlines and timelines have changed, and we're just trying to follow along with the changes at the federal level, and that's why it ended up on this agenda. If they will not let us, allow us to do that, then that memo that we have stands, and we can put it on next week's agenda, but we'd still like to have permission to put the order in before the 30th, because we don't want to spend more money than we have to.
Are you speaking about the vehicles?
Uh, they'll be...
Is it air packs, radios?
Oh, yeah.
So, I guess my next question was, in the actual memo itself, and I went back right before the meeting and looked, for the actual vehicle from Jenkins Ford, it says attached are the specifications. I did not see it attachment. So, I mean, what, so I guess my question is, what are we buying?
Jimmy, can you talk about the specifications for the vehicle?
The vehicle we're buying are going to be four brand new Ford, Ford F-150s to replace all of our emergency medical vehicles that we respond to obligations, medical calls and such that are handed down from the police department that are 15 to 20 years old, with all got over 110,000 miles on them and are worn out. So, you know, we're getting them, I contacted three different dealerships, and, you know, that was the dealership with the cheapest price, and it's below state bid on the price of the vehicle.
I get that, and I support that. It, just there was no specifications in there, so I have no clue what we're going to vote on the purchase, so. Didn't know if you were getting something from somebody else.
Correction, please. They're late.
Okay.
F-150s. Yes.
And so, once, you know, say if this does pass tonight, because we have to, we have a deadline, well, the next agenda will be itemized then, like each individual?
Only if they won't let us move the money around within the grant. If they let us move the money without, around within the grant, the different totals, then we're fine. But we have not heard back yet.
Then the state auditor wouldn't have any trouble with that.
I don't believe so. It would be different if we had to use our own funding, but if we don't have to, we're not using any matching CDS funds.
Is...
Part of the issue is grants are submitted two or three years, at the price of two or three years, and by the time we get to where they award the grants, prices have gone up.
All right. So, just for clarification purposes then, so we are not utilizing the rescue fund for any, any, any of these purchases?
My understanding was there should be enough money in the...
There's enough money in the CDS grant that we shouldn't have to if they allow us to move the money around to the different items that we have to purchase, because some have come in under what was listed for, and some are over. So, if they allow us to ship the money around and everything, we will govern.
But we're not purchasing anything that wasn't listed in the original grant. It's just the totals that are changing. But we still have to get permission from other levels of government to move forward with that.
And the deadline is the 30th to do that.
Yeah. The deadline is to, for us to get the prices that are quoted for this year is Monday. So, we have, otherwise we'll pay a higher price.
So, what, okay. I get it. So, on the original agenda, it was a consideration of purchase. On the new agenda, just handed out to us after the consideration, now the resolution.
We were waiting to get quotes back, and we weren't sure what we were going to have on Monday. We still hadn't received all the information for the quotes, so we put it more generally, a general title on the agenda because we didn't have everything back yet, and we were hoping to hear back from the congressional office as well.
But there's nothing in the resolution that is, that is more in-depth, or makes me change from what we would have waited, right?
No.
So, I mean, I don't want to cause to hold it up, but I...
The only thing it's going to do is cost more if we wait past the 30th.
Well, I think from a procedural standpoint, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the four Ford F-150s. Total purchase price, 191,960 from Jenkins Ford, is that correct? Utilizing the CDS funds, and if needed, to utilize the rescue billing funds, would be my motion. And I'll be more than happy to make a motion each for each one of them.
And I'll second that. For discussion purposes, the, uh, so procedurally, we're going to be making a motion. Can we make a motion for each one procedurally within this, within the overall consideration of purchases of equipment?
That would be Richard's question.
You can, it's how you want to do it.
Okay. Yes, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to fund the mobile, uh, regular units in the amount of 74,127.15 with 25 portables from Bearcom. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion for the portables for 158,619.25. Excuse me, that one's from Motorola Radios from Bearcom.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And make a motion for the price for the Cascade, for the total funding award of $52,000 from the CDS grant, or from the, aim to utilizing the funds if needed, the rescue billing fund for the breathing air systems. And that's from who?
Breathing air system.
Breathing air system, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, for the hazmat, skip out air packs from Johnson's Fire Equipment, and utilize the CDS in the amount of 108,000 worth, aim to be able to utilize any extra funds for rescue billing funds.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
For the turnout gear, in the amount of 59,380 for the 12 sets, turnout gear from Atlantic, utilize the CDS or the rescue funds.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Ward, you have a comment?
Oh, my first to me?
We didn't say you wanted to be first.
Well, I mean, he told me, he told me I had to be first. All right. Well, anyway, I'm just going to make this very brief. I had an opportunity to do my job at Harrison County Community Corrections to go to a, a summit called the CIT Summit, which is Crisis Intervention Training. We had three of our officers, two patrolmen and one sergeant that also went for the CIT training. It was, it was a really, I think it was a really good training. It kind of meets, you know, once we get this crisis worker, you know, hired, you know, within the, within the city to work with our police department and be embedded in our police department. I think this program will really, really help with what we're trying to do, especially with our crisis worker. I have a booklet here. I can give it to the city manager afterwards, and if you want to discuss it with the chief. If it's a program that you all feel is something that could benefit Clarksville, then all that's here, and and there's a lot of resources. I think they, um, one of the ladies that we spoke with, Lyda, what's her name? Yeah. Um, they were, they're very helpful with trying to, you know, trying to get the different law enforcement agencies. And not only law enforcement agencies, but EMS, fire, that sort of thing, and, you know, CIT training, so. It's just a resource I just wanted to bring up. If it works for us, it works for us. If it doesn't, it doesn't, so. But, um, I wanted to talk about that. The other, the other thing that my request is, is that, is there any way we could, you could go to the finance director to see if we could, we could calculate all the VNO tax collection from the last year between Second Street and Fourth Street in downtown, and West Pike Street and West Main Street, and that's on all, all businesses? And then within the central business district, um, within those, um, within those quarters of the central business district, all of the professional services, VNO tax collection, just for the last year or year totals that you have. And the reason why I ask that, because I, I think we, to be honest with you, we probably would have a work session later in the future to start aggressively, you know, trying to figure out ways how we can attract businesses downtown. I think we've kind of cross-talked about it a lot. People have had a lot of good ideas. Some were pipe dreams, but I think if we could see some numbers on, you know, what we're, what we're collecting, you know, within those confines, within, you know, within, you know, within the different, um, different categories of businesses, I think we'd get a better idea whether or not, you know, we could have pursued something as aggressively as, you know, giving, you know, giving tax perks to folks that want to come into town, so. And that's why I requested. That we guys are like, you know, are not like, what the heck does he want to know that for, so. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Howe?
I'm moving to adjourn, but...
Second.
Call for adjournment with second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.